If you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call the roll. Chris McCosky.
Here.
Terry Lautner.
Here.
Kyle Travis.
Here.
Dave Darga.
Here.
Jeff Shaw, I am here. Connie Preston is excused, and we expect Jordan to be here. So he is not here yet. Declaration of Conflict of Interest, Item F, Marina Non-Slip Rate Discussion. I want you guys to be aware, if you would like to recuse me, I am a user of the marina. I do launch my boat there, I do park vehicles there, and that is going to be part of the discussion. Having said that, I think I've always been a huge proponent of the marina and whatever needs to be done financially. The way it works with the charter township is if you guys decide to recuse me, there has to be a motion, support, and then a unanimous decision from the board. So I'm totally supportive of that if you want to recuse me, because like I said, I am a marina user. So I'll open it up, if anybody would like to make that motion, you can certainly do that.
See reason why?
Jeff, I, at least in the past, had been a slip holder and voted on these things and thought it was appropriate because it's up there, and I too probably will put a boat in this year and pay a rent fee at some point, so.
Yeah, I don't think that warrants refusal.
Okay, well, I wanted to make that, make you guys aware. Moving on to Item 5, Public Comment. It is currently 6:03, and I would like to open Public Comment. Anybody like to make public comment prior to the meeting? The rest of the meeting? Okay, seeing none, it's 6:03, and I'm going to close Public Comment. Moving on to the Consent Calendar. The purpose of the Consent Calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the public, board, or staff may ask that any item of the Consent Calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. This evening, we have department reports from our treasurer, planning and zoning, harbor master. We have minutes from 2/13/23 and 3/223 meetings. Post-audit invoices dated 2, sorry, February 1, '22, that should be '23. February 1, '23 to 2/28/23. And I think we're going to get a verbal report from our fire chief. Anybody in the public that would like anything removed in place elsewhere? Any staff or any board members that would like anything removed? Okay, seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
I'm going to approve the consent calendar, support.
So we have a motion and support. Any discussion? Okay. I'm going to take a roll call vote as Jordan gets seated. Chris McCosky.
Here.
Yes, Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Okay, Dave Darga?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes, and Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Welcome, Jordan.
Hi.
Yeah, for the consent agenda, we have to do a roll call. So. Agenda approval, anybody have any modifications or changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion by Dave, support by Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Reports and presentations, you've got the supervisor's report in front of you along with a copy of the land bank grant that we received. I don't have anything else, anybody have any questions about the supervisor's report? Okay, trustee remarks, any trustees have any remarks? Okay. Engineers' report, we do not have our engineers here. Other officer remarks, Rookie, you got anything for us?
Yes, sir, thank you. Very short, my agenda for tomorrow's only 80 pages. Anything on here that you have questions about, go ahead and give me a call. All right, it's pretty laid out, everything from the Leland Dam to the $50 million Jew and Isle facility, okay? So we're real busy, we're busy at the airport, just got a big grant in for the walkways to the planes and stuff, so. Like I said, looking over, any questions, just give me a call, okay?
Thank you, Rookie. Chief.
Good evening. Couple of things here. Just a quick overview on the monthly report. It was a typical month of February as far as the types of calls went, but we're down from 45 from last year to 39 this year of various calls. I think I mentioned last month, or at the last board meeting, that we did submit for the exhaust removal system to the AFG, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant for the truck bay station. We are in union negotiations right now, so it seems to be going well. The firefighters are identified as, are represented by the International Association of Firefighters, and they are the Elmwood Township Professional Firefighters, Local 5387. So you may be hearing or seeing that number around later on. We had a recall repair to our ambulance. Something to do with the sensor heater filter for the DEF system. Went in while it was in, we had them do the oil change and the typical annual maintenance, so wrap that up into that. I, unless there's anything on the monthly report, I've got something else I want to address. Is that good? You guys got it?
Yes.
You've heard me up here a couple of times talking about MABUS. And we signed on as a member of the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System along with Grand Traverse County and a few other area departments. All of Leland County is part of that system, and we've sent people out on deployments, and it's to help back up communities in their time of need. And it's worked well for those communities, and you know, God willing, it'll never happen here, but if it does, the system's working, and it's provided some valuable resources to things like the tornado over in Gaylord, the grain bin fire down in Downstate. And if you remember a while back, there was a fire up in Menominee County that just got, I don't know if this came last week, a resolution from the county of Menominee, Michigan, that I wanted to read the administrator's letter to us. It's not just to Elmwood, but to all the responders, the agencies that were involved, if you just bear with me, so. This is, as I mentioned, Menominee County, Michigan. All responding agencies, they called it the Resolute Fire, R-E-S-O-L-U-T-E Fire. That was on October of 2000, October 6th, 2022. This is from Jason Caravoe, I hope I'm pronouncing his last name right. He's the county administrator from Menominee. His letter states, "There are no words or actions that can accurately express our community's gratitude for the more than 80 agencies across Michigan and Wisconsin that responded to the historical industrial fire at Resolute Forest Products that started on October 6th of 2022. Looking back, we can reflect on how truly fortunate our community was that there were no serious injuries or deaths as a result of this incident, and that all of the first responders on scene fought valiantly to keep the fire from spreading to the nearby residential neighborhoods. There is no doubt that we can look back and appreciate these things today because of the collective efforts of all of you that responded to our community's call for help. As I said, there is no way we can thank you enough for what you did for our community. We hope that you and your communities never find yourself in need of the help that we found ourselves in, but if you do, you can rest assured that communities of Menominee County will answer your call. We pray for your safety and good health as you continue to protect all of your, all of our communities. Sincerely, Jason Caravoe, County Administrator of Menominee County." This is his letter. And they passed a resolution, and in this resolution is a list of the agencies, two and a half pages of agencies that responded to that fire. So it's pretty impressive, you think you can pull all them agencies together, put them under a centralized incident command system, and handle such a large, complex incident, something well beyond the means of a smaller community. So the system's out there, it's working, and we're a part of it, we're doing good in the world, so. Anything else for me?
Nope, thank you, Chief. Yeah, that's an awesome, the MABUS system is awesome, so. No other officer remarks. Communications from the clerk, Connie wanted me to tell you she misses us and wishes she was here. Actually, that's a lie, she's in Florida and she doesn't care. So. Item F, TTCI Presentation on Becoming an MPO. And Hannah, you have a PowerPoint?
Yes.
So we're going to step out there so they can put down the cone of silence.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Hannah Yurk, I'm with Networks Northwest, I'm a community planner. We also have Rob Person here, who will introduce himself.
I'm the Community Development Director.
And we both will be available to answer questions. I'll be presenting, but like I said, Rob and I both will be here at the end of present these, or answer any questions. So we are here today to be presenting the Traverse City Garfield Urban Area and sort of the next steps for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. So I'll be saying that a lot, the MPO, quite a bit. But this has actually been in the works for quite some time now. What an MPO is, it's a federally required organization when an urbanized area reaches a population of 50,000. And the Traverse City urbanized area actually just reached that at the end of December of 2022, and they have a population of 56,890. And there has been some sort of, sort of, transportation task force since about the 1988, about 1980s, that started looking at a lot of the transportation issues that were taking place around Traverse City. And this has evolved over time to sort of expand what that is. So in 1990, MDOT actually proposed the TC TALIS, and that was the Traverse City Transportation and Land Use Study. And they actually started expanding on doing additional studies within the urbanized area or within the urban area. And in 2016, it actually is now currently referred to as the Traverse Transportation Coordination, Coordination Initiative. And this has been running very similar to what an MPO would be, would be running as. So very similar structure and so on. And what this actually is though, so a Metropolitan Planning Organization, it's a form for cooperative transportation decision-making for the metropolitan planning area. And this is actually, this board, it's made of representatives from the local government, state, federal, and transportation agencies within the metropolitan area. And it is a form for cooperative decision-making that involves key stakeholders and the public. And it just ensures that the federal spending on transportation occurs through a comprehensive cooperative and continued 3C population, or 3C process. And like I said, this is federally required in any urbanized area that reaches the 50,000 or more in population. And when I'm referring to the urbanized area, it is everything outlined in purple. And as you can see, it does go up the coast a little bit, or it actually goes up to Bingham Township, and you'll see Elmwood Township in there. And so anywhere it's in purple is where that 50,000, over 50,000 population is falling into. So this is considered the Traverse City urbanized area. One of the major steps, though, to sort of keep this progressing is creating the Metropolitan Planning Area. And this is actually the geographic area that is determined in agreement between the MPO and the governor. And this is where the actual metropolitan transportation planning process would be carried out. And this actually, at a minimum, has to contain that urbanized area, but it actually also has to look into the future in a 20-year forecast of what else could become urbanized. And this is the actual recommended MPA boundary that MDOT has provided. This is not approved yet or anything, this is, that's something that the MPO would have to look into and the different, the members would have to, actually have to approve. But this is the recommended boundary by MDOT, just for reference. And for reference, this is, there are currently 13 other MPOs within the state of Michigan. And this is actually showing the urbanized area, and then it's showing the study area boundaries within the bigger outline is the study area. So like I said, this is the, the TTCI has been running very similar to what a typical MPO structure would be like. So this is the actual sort of structure that most MPOs follow. And just a little bit more detail, the Policy Committee, that is where, or the board, and that's where the locally elected officials, public agencies, and appropriate state officials would sit on. And they actually are the decision-making part of the board. But additionally, all MPOs have the Planning or Technical Committee, and this actually will advise the MPO for the transportation issues. And they actually provide a lot of the recommendations on projects and different programs. And this is typically composed of staff-level officials at the local, state, or federal level. So the major functions of an MPO, they establish a fair and impartial setting, they evaluate transportation alternatives. And one of the main function are these three different plans that have to be developed, updated, and approved. And I will talk about each of those on the next couple of slides. And additionally, is the major one, which is involving the public, which is residents in key groups. So most MPOs as well would create a public involvement plan. So one of the first steps to become an MPO will be creating the long-range transportation plan. This is actually looking at that planning area and would be looking at in the future of 20 years on future goals, strategies, different projects and policies that could take place within the next 20 years. This is typically updated and reviewed every five years, and this does require public participation within this plan. So that plan is considered the long range. This is now considered the, the short-term plan. So this is the Transportation Improvement Program. So this covers four years, and this actually will lay out specific projects that would be taking place within the four-year timeline. And it, like I said, it's very specific projects, the cost of it, and it has to be fiscally constrained in this plan and actually conform with the state plan as well. And then one of the major last plans that will have to be developed and updated, this is the Unified Planning Work Program. This is actually an annual plan, so this is done every year, and this lays out the work products and so on that's actually performed each year with the different timelines and costs associated with them. So one of the major funding implications with the MPO, so currently, the Traverse City area is considered a small urban area because it had less than 50,000 in population. So for transportation, it was receiving 385,000 in STP small urban, and then 23,000 in SPR funds for TTCI to actually, that's more of the administrative costs. So after an MPO designation occurs, this would actually increase the STP small MPO funds to $1 million. This is specific for the projects. 228,000 in the CPG funds, and that's again more of the administrative costs. And then there's a separate line item for 120,000 about, for carbon reduction funds, and there's different requirements in different projects where those funds could be used for. And just to note on here, there is still a rural task force for Grand Traverse County, Benzy County, and Leland County. They receive separate funding, but those are for rural roads, and this specific would be for urbanized, the urban roads that become designated. So here's some, a timeline provided by MDOT. So we are, let's see if you can see my mouse, oh, you can't. We're at this public meeting for invitation of local governments to the MPO process. So we are currently giving this presentation to all the current board members of TTCI, and then we will continue doing so to other potential members as well. And so we will continue doing these presentations. The goal that MDOT has is by September 2023, we would actually have the MPO designation by the governor and by all the local units of government. And that's where this, one of the other steps, and one of the reasons we're here today, and you'll probably see more of us in the future, is this intergovernmental agreement that has to be completed. So every participating jurisdiction would have to be in agreement with the MPO. And that is something, again, will be in the works and will be presented at a later time. And then this last line on here, these different objects, these are more involved with the actual transportation, transportation documents, like I've, I've discussed prior. So again, this is sort of the MPO designation checklist that the TTCI is currently going to be working on. The MPO name, the boundary, which is key, updated bylaws, organizational structure, policy board membership, the intergovernmental agreements, and then the location of MPO. So this will be underway, is currently underway in working towards these steps for the TTCI. And this last slide, I just want to note because MDOT is a major partner in this, and they've been giving us the recommendations in different PowerPoints to us and TTCI. They are providing the guidance to us and also Beta, since Beta is now eligible to become a small urban sort of organization or agency for themselves. So Beta, or MDOT is working with Beta on that process, but we are working with them specifically for the MPO process. So they act as our primary contact. Usually, they will sit on the Technical and Policy Committee, and they will help us with all federally required documents to the FHWA and FTA. Okay, I am here for questions, I know it's a lot of information, and I'm happy to answer any of them that you guys might have. And this is our website, that does have information, it does have an MDOT presentation on there, and it will stay up to date on any different updates that occur.
Any questions for Hannah or Rob Person? Anybody?
What's the, the intergovernmental agreement, what type of things does that cover? And what happens if somebody, except everybody's got to agree?
Yep.
What do you do if somebody refuses?
So at a minimum, it has to be 70% of the population, so of the urbanized area, 70% of that population has to be in agreement to bring it to the governor. So if there's a jurisdiction that doesn't want to be a part of it, that is acceptable. We just need to reach that 70%. So in that intergovernmental agreement, we had, we received a draft form from MDOT, and that is still something that the TTCI has to review. But typically, that will just list that you're willing to be a part of it, and there'll be additional information depending on what TTCI kind of outlines within the agreement. But it's really just more about the partnership and, and willing to have a person from your board, on that board as well, will be sort of on there, so. I don't know, Rob, if there's anything else?
Yeah, it'll, so as Hannah said, it'll basically outline how, whatever local here the government is filming out their, their template, who they choose to serve in that role on the policy board. Also, what their contribution would be to the MPO in terms of dues, because there is dues that'll, that'll come about from each of the local units of government and the organizations that are participating, such as Beta and the Airport Authority. But as Hannah said, need 70% of the urbanized area, which was the purple outline on the map. So there are a couple of communities, Whitewater Township specifically does not have any urbanized area in it. But MDOT is recommending that Whitewater Township join because there is a lot of transportation and movement of people and goods from the US 131 corridor in Calcasas into the Traverse City area. There's a lot of commuter traffic that is coming from that way. They envision that there is going to be future population increases in those locations as well as other areas outside of the greater Traverse City area. What type of dues and how would they, like, the population? Yeah, so there's, there isn't anything, any threshold set right now in any of the templates. That's something that the TTCI Board would have to discuss. I think we would be taking into account, or I should say not we, the board and the policymakers would be taking into account the threshold of roads that they have within the community, the amount of urbanized area population that they have in their communities, that sort of thing. Yep, yeah, this, right now, this is kind of just, this is, it's going to move quickly over the next, you know, basically nine months to 13 months. But these are kind of just the introductory meetings. Our next TTCI Board meeting, top, the main topic of discussion is going to be that template contract agreement that MDOT's provided to us that's been utilized as a template agreement for the other 13 MPOs that exist in the state of Michigan.
Any other questions? Thank you, you guys.
Perfect.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll be back.
Sarah, would you grab the lights, too? Thank you. So I thought it should be the Traverse City Elmwood Metropolitan Planning Organization, but they wanted Garfield in there for some reason, so. Item nine, old business, there is none. Moving on to Item 10, a consideration of zoning map amendment and text amendments. Yeah, thanks, sir.
So apologies, I was actually out of town on vacation while Connie was assembling the packet, so you just have a memo dated today, pretty much the proposed text before you. It was introduced at your last board meeting. It's, there's been no changes. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I did prepare a recommend, recommended motion for you. for you.
Sorry, I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Oh, of course. So in the packet, I'll guess, I'll just kind of like briefly explain it. There's two different documents. They essentially say the same thing, just in different ways. The first document that does say ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, that is kind of a clean version, that is what you would be formally approving if you do make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment. And then it also included a four-page document, which is kind of redlining what is in the ordinance currently and what is being proposed to change. So the planning commission ultimately did agree, sorry, I don't know why I'm out of breath, but the commission did kind of agree that these, generally speaking, are clarifying, past practice, clarifying portions, you know, that ultimately in our ordinance, we do already, you know, limit one dwelling per lot, but right now, I'm being, we're proposing changes to make it very abundantly clear to everybody who looks at our ordinance, because, you know, not everybody is a planner, not everybody is familiar with zoning ordinances. We want to make it as user-friendly as possible. I mean, I'm happy to go through, you know, individual changes, if that's what you would like, Kyle.
Well, I guess there was only one thing when I was going through it that I had a question about, and I didn't cross-reference it with the, with what exists. Is on page, I don't know which one I've got, on the, the ordinance, on page two, three, under the table, note G, the building projections portion?
Yes.
Is, is that, well, I guess I'll just ask my question, or what my concern is, these canopy things that people are doing?
Mm-hmm.
Like to put over motorhomes or boats? Is this basically trying to preclude those from being able to go in?
Well, no. It's, so again, so this has been historical past practice. This was in the zoning ordinance before twenty seventeen, before the township did that overhaul. We had that exact verbatim language, and so it's just reinstituting that to allow eaves to extend, you know, within the setback. Obviously, you know, the footing of any structure cannot exceed without obtaining a variance from the ZBA. It's, it's just allowing, you know, again, some overhangs to extend into the setback, because again, that's historical past practice.
Okay, and did we have something that said where the, what the existing stuff is? So this, this is, the only part that's changing is actually allowing the eaves into the setbacks?
Yes, the note G, building, building projections.
Okay. Because when I read it, I wasn't sure if, because we're talking about required yard shall be open to the sky, unobstructed by any building except for accessory buildings. So I guess technically those kind of, like, I'm thinking like a lot of people have become real popular, like the take a sale and cover your back patio, or the overhanging, like extendable retractable awnings, or the increasingly prevalent metal roof just tacked into the ground, not actually building things.
Mm-hmm.
Which I definitely don't want to make not allowed, because I don't have one yet, but I want one.
I wouldn't be going after you for that.
Well, I wouldn't go after anybody. So that's, that was my only question when I read through this. So this is just about eaves and overhangs, basically?
Yeah, I mean, I see your point. It is, I mean, it does talk about, you know, how every part of a required yard shall be open, but it does go into accessory buildings.
And that's where, yeah, because some of that stuff isn't, like a temporary awning isn't necessarily an accessory building, and like those, I think that's the whole magic of them, because they're not actually, like literally, most of them are just, have like a tent stake in the ground.
Yeah.
Not permanent.
Yeah, they're not permanent.
It's, I would view it as that that's an allowed use, you know, if you were to have, you know, a, you know, overhang in your backyard that's purely accessory, I mean, that's, that that would be allowed, and this, you know, this note, this footnote would not intrude on that.
Okay. That was my only question, thank you.
Took me a while to understand what you were saying.
Any other questions for Sarah? All right, I would look for a motion. She has a recommended motion here.
Are these two separate things, or is it all one?
The document you would be approving is the page, pages one, two, and three of three.
So I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, a zoning ordinance amendment to amend section two-two definitions, amend section three dot five, three dot twelve, three, and three dot thirteen to clarify language regarding dwellings, amend section five dot six, table of dimensional requirements and its footnotes, amend section five dot seven, accessory buildings, amend section six point five lighting.
Support.
A motion and support. Hannah, do we have any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Jordan Gallagher?
Yep.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Chris McCosky?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And ten B, TC Whiskey amended resolution for the ITF. Sarah, did you have any info on this, or, I know this was Connie's, okay. You can see that we needed to amend that, because our assessor pointed out that the two properties had been combined, so it's just basically a clerical issue on our parts, but we do need to amend it. So, guys have any questions about that?
I move we approve resolution number three of twenty twenty-three, the resolution approving application for industrial facility exemption certificate for the Traverse City Whiskey Holding Company.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? We've already been through this, so let's do a roll call again, since it is a resolution. Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris McCosky?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, you guys. Item C, soccer licensing agreement renewal. Come on up, sir.
All right, next one.
Andy, is it?
Yes, that's correct. Hi, my name's Andy Bowerman. I'm a board member for the Lillenaw Soccer Club, and we have a, we've had an agreement for these fields since twenty nineteen, and I'm here just to request that that agreement is updated and renewed. That's, that's my, my main, my main ask. If, if you're not familiar with the Lillenaw Soccer Club, it's a five-county club spanning across Lillenaw County, so we have Elmwood as a district, Glen Lake, Northport, Sutton's Bay, what am I missing? I'm missing something else. Leland. So that's, so there's five groups, and so I'm the representative for Elmwood, I sit on the board, I'm a parent of, of some of the soccer players, and maintain the field, set up and maintain the fields with other parent volunteers, so.
Okay. Guys have any questions for Andy about this?
Everything's the same, what I can do.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, given the price, right?
Price is the same.
It was signed under the North Storm, or sorry, North Star soccer team, which is one of our travel teams. So we typically sign these things as Lillenaw Soccer Club, that would be the only, the only thing that's slightly different.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the license agreement with the Lillenaw Soccer Club for a soccer field, some practice field for this year, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. And this is a three-year agreement?
Oh.
This, the last one, so do we want to do it for three again?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, you want to amend that, and you support that?
For three years.
Okay.
Starting in twenty twenty-three.
All right, so we have a motion and support. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're all set?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll get a signed agreement over to you. Actually, did you email one a blank?
We've been working with Connie.
Okay. Yeah, if you send one over to her, we'll get it signed.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you, Andy. Yep. Item D, request for statement of no objection for Cedar Lake Water Ski Course. Gary, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Gary Garten, living in Elmwood Township, and I, with a couple of my friends, have been doing this water ski course for four years. I think, and we're renewals after every three years on renewal. I think everybody maybe got a copy of, kind of got the nuts and bolts of our group.
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve a statement of no objection for the Cedar Lake Water Ski Course. Support.
Motion and support. Anybody have any discussion? I know last time we did this, we had the Loon Ranger here, and, and, what's that?
I did a story on it.
And you did a story on it, too. That's right. And we had representatives from the Cedar Lake Association, and everybody seemed to be fine with working it out together and talking about it, so I don't see any issues.
We did get from the Cedar Lake Association approval for the next three years.
Awesome. Awesome, thanks, Gary. Any questions or anything, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're all set, Gary. Thank you.
Just don't hit any loons out there.
Yeah. Okay. 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 Right, right, okay. Yep, I will, I'll get it signed. Thanks, Gary. Marina Financial Consultant Compensation. So he agreed to do this, he, he didn't request any specific amount. I think you guys all saw the amount of time and effort and what he put into it, and the amount of research, and how valuable it is. So, I mean, I'll start out the process. You know, I think somewhere between ten and twenty grand is what we should pay him. You know, we couldn't get anybody else to do it, and I don't think around, from around here, and I don't think we, I don't think we could have paid enough for somebody around here to do it. So the guy, the, you know, just taking one of, one piece of his advice is going to save us thousands and thousands of dollars over the next few years and put us in good shape moving forward, so. I mean, that's my feeling on it. The guy, the guy was amazing. His report was amazing.
Yeah, no doubt about that. He had a pretty comprehensive report, and a pretty user-friendly, easy to read and understand.
And he spent hundreds of hours.
And I could tell that, yeah.
I mean, you know, he called everybody, he called marinas all over the Midwest and had documents. I, I mean, it was, I was really impressed with it, so.
You'd be lucky to get something like that for twenty thousand on the market.
Yeah, I think so. And I could tell you that for sure, if I could have gotten anybody else to respond to do it, so, you know, I, I mean, I certainly want to be conscious of, of spending our taxpayer dollars, but having him do that, if we just invest in the triple eight bonds that he suggested, you know, right now, at the rate right now, that'd make us fifty-six grand in the next year. You know, not even touching all of the other things that he suggested, which, you know, one of them's on the agenda later, so what's everybody's thought on that? I mean, anybody else have thoughts on?
Well, personally, I think he was very great to work with, easy to, you know, talk to. His presentation was amazing. I, I just don't want to insult him by undercutting, you know, his time and efforts, even though he was taking it and wanting to help us out, but I, I think that this is valuable information, like you said, Jeff, that we can use for seventy years, you know?
Right.
As he said, so I would say at least fifteen to eighteen personally.
Dave, what are your thoughts?
Well, first of all, where's the money going to come from?
Marina fund.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's the exact fund that we're having a problem with, but I, I do believe that his paperwork, his information, his presentation really, hopefully, hopefully, has moved this board off a dead center and going to move it into the future. And so I, I don't have a problem with paying him, I would say fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, but I, I would ask this, I guess, just tell him where we stand and ask him what he thinks is acceptable, or maybe you've done that.
I have, I have.
Well, then I would go to the other hand. I would go to, you know, maybe eighteen thousand or thereabouts.
Okay.
You know, his, his work is amazing, just amazing.
Yeah, it was.
And as Terry states, it's very understandable. You can put all the pieces together, and you miss nothing.
Right. And he made several trips up here on his own, you know, drove up, met with us all day, sat in the, you know, asking us questions, and went back and talked to Chris, and talked to Connie, and talked to me, and then came out and calculated, and then came back and asked us more questions, so.
I would say the eighteen would be a fair for the.
Okay. Kyle, what are your thoughts?
I wasn't around when we got into this, so I don't really know how we got here, but I'm a little, I guess, more perplexed at the, we never agreed to pay him, now we're talking about paying twenty thousand dollars. Not that I, that's more the concern to me of what we're, it's more the, the, the concept or the precedent or the idea of, hey, come in, say you'll do something for free for us, and, and I don't know, I mean, I don't know if the implication was that we would, you know, determine what we could pay, like, I don't know how this got to this point, so I don't really want to say too much, but the perplexing idea to me is, somebody told us that we were going to do something for free, and now we're not just like buying him something or doing something nice for him, which I, I think is highly appropriate when somebody
Right.
goes above and beyond, which even doing anything for us was above and beyond. So it's not that I'm like questioning doing something, but I'm a little concerned that, of like the idea that like, well, people will show up and say they'll do something for free, but then assume that we should pay them market rate if we're happy with them. And I get that we're happy with them, and I get that he put a lot of time, so it's not so much, I'm not like bothered by the idea of
Just to catch up, so, so, yeah, he never agreed, yeah, he never agreed to do it for free. When we, when we, we were trying to find somebody to help us with this, you know, he contacted us, and he said, look, you know, he just retired from GM, he says, I'd love to do it, I think it'd be a fun project, and you can pay me what you think it's worth.
Okay, so that, that was where we
Those were, those were pretty much the, his exact words.
All right, so I didn't understand that.
But the board approved going out and signing something.
Right, right.
We were looking for a consultant or someone that we were willing to pay to get us to this point.
Yep.
And I think
And that was approved by this board.
Yeah, and I think we talked about fifteen to twenty thousand bucks to do that, didn't we?
Yeah, I think we may have talked about that, so.
We thought it probably cost, I believe that's true.
Right. So that's kind of how we got where we were, I mean, he's
So we knew we were going to come to a situation like
We did, we did.
Yeah, we knew we had to pay.
Yep, we did.
Okay, that was where I'm just kind of sitting here going, what?
We did, and he's, he's so nice that he's like, because I, because I did, I had that conversation with him, Dave, I'm like, so, so give me some guidance. I mean, where, where are we at? Oh, you know, well, you pay me what it's worth, yeah, I mean, so I, I think it's worth way more than what we're probably even going to pay him.
I don't think we can pay him what it's worth.
Yeah, so, because like you said, Dave, I truly think this, this will help get us going in the right direction. We just have to take his advice and, and do some of those things.
There you go, exactly, right.
But now we at least know what we need to do.
Yeah, take the hard step.
So that's the history on it, Kyle, just to kind of let you know, so.
So we had agreed that we were going to compensate him.
Yes.
The question is, how much are we gonna compensate him?
Yeah.
Because we haven't really been presented with the bill.
Right.
And we, we didn't set it out, which is still not a way I'd like to see the township do business.
Right.
But we're here.
Had I been able to get three quotes, had I been able to get one other quote, you know, so. So that's where we're at.
I'd make a motion that we pay him eighteen thousand dollars. That's what that.
Okay. Jordan, did you wanna?
Oh, no, I agree. I think compensate him in that eighteen thousand dollar range and hopefully maybe we can have a follow-up with him later on.
I, I, and he actually said he'd be happy to come up anytime and follow up and.
You know, there's, there's other areas in the township that needs looking at, but in the future, as Kyle states, we need to get an estimate.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. I would agree, seeing how this worked out with him, I, yeah, for sure.
And in that way, everybody's on a level playing field.
Yep. And Dave, you supported that, correct?
I did.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or discussion about it? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Let me just do this real quick. I'm doing Connie's job, too. Yeah. Yep. Okay. Alrighty. Moving on to item F, Marina non-slip rates discussion. Guys probably all had a chance. I didn't know Pete was not gonna be here. I, that's a double negative. I thought Pete was gonna be here. So, so essentially tonight, we're talking about the non-slip items. So I don't know if you guys all had a chance to look at this. You know, I guess in order to make it simple, my thoughts would be like seasonal ramp usage fees. You know, currently it's seventy-five for a seasonal slip or for a seasonal pass. I think going to a hundred would be absolutely reasonable. Fifty to seventy-five and a hundred and fifty to two hundred. If anybody thinks we should go up higher than that or?
I do. I do. I think we should go up higher. This is a, we're not gonna address this every year, so we need to address it appropriately since we haven't addressed it since two thousand and eighteen, really, so.
Okay.
Or even maybe before that.
But we should look at it in the fall, or, you know, after the season.
Yeah, I was actually thinking that. I was thinking we could look at all of these.
The slip fees, too.
We're going to look at slip fees, right?
It should be part of that, too.
But you don't, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing. The revenue that we, we're behind the goat a lot. So the revenue that we lose this year, we're not gonna make up again next year.
No, lost it.
So it's a loss, loss, loss.
Yep.
And, and we're not able to adjust the slip rates, so that's a huge blow to this. So I would rather raise it and tweak it in the fall than to jump it, jump it, but we lose, you know, twenty percent or thirty percent of our revenue from that launch ramp and/or that permitting system. That, that really is a, an outstanding deal. It is just really amazing achieving seasonal launch ramps. I mean, if you launch at twenty bucks, if you launch ten times, it's more than made up of your money.
Yep.
And they'll launch ten times in six weeks, you know.
So what are you thinking for seasonal ramp usage?
I would go to a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay. I think that's reasonable, personally.
And I think that's very fair.
Yep. And then the, after August fifteenth, I'm not sure why we changed that.
I don't know why that's changed, because you're gonna get them daily if you don't give them.
Right. And I know the idea is that, you know, that's when the salmon show up and that's when some guys launch every day or whatever.
Yeah, but then those are, you know, at that point, they can pay daily.
Yeah. So do we want to eliminate that completely, that fifty-dollar seasonal pass after August fifteenth?
I would think so, yes.
I don't.
There isn't usually many that's.
Okay. I think we eliminate that. I'm good with that.
Okay.
So, so I think we get rid of that completely. And then the hundred and fifty-dollar fee?
That's, that's one of those, depending on what we do for the dailies, we don't even need to have a, we shouldn't have a special fee for commercial users.
Right. I don't know why we have that, actually.
And, and that's another one where the township is, I don't know, intimidated or whatever the situation was or, this township's, it's, Marina's gotta be self-sustaining.
Right.
So what is, this is rampant, so this is a guy with a charter boat who's putting his charter boat in, pulling out, in and out every day?
In and out, in and out.
Right, so is that, is that seasonal?
Well, like, I guess the, the argument would be is, is he would then say, well, why, why can't I just get a hundred and twenty-five dollar pass?
Well, because he's commercial. And, and anything that's commercial is supposed to be paying double fee.
So should that just be two fifty then?
No.
If he wants a season pass?
I, I say no, because it's for hire. It's one of those things where you're bringing in more people to use the property. Different cars, different, you're picking up people, that whole thing.
Okay.
So, so I want to understand, Dave. So you're saying?
Well, if we were gonna do that as an annual, I would say that one should go to, say, three hundred and fifty to four hundred bucks. That one should go up substantially. But I think if we raise the daily fees, we'll, you know, I'm not sure where that daily fee is going to be, daily launch ramp fee.
Okay.
Because if you, and again, if you launch ten times at a hundred and fifty bucks, you're, I mean, you're paying less than the daily launch fee by a long ways.
Well, and I think part of this is, I think the, the logic of, of these two, because you got a commercial launch and retrieve fee, which is, I think, you.
No, this isn't for the big boats. Well, this is way down below. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, well, because I think you were saying, otherwise the commercial guy, would, would he have, would we have the charter fisher guy pay a commercial launch and retrieve? So he's already paying forty bucks.
Well, there, there's a double commercial or there's a double charter boat person. There's the one that's doing it for money, then there's boater that fishes all the time. Well, you fish all the time. If you were at a tremable boat and you're launching and that's, I think this is the non-commercial that, that a hundred and fifty was. I believe that to be true.
I, yeah, I wish Pete was here. I think the hundred, see, and I guess I didn't know there was a special rate. So there's some charter guys that are out there, like you said, they have their boat on the trailer. Tony Rajanovich does this. He's got his boat on the trailer. He dumps it in, he fishes, comes out, leaves, next day he's dumping it in. So this must be for the season, a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, that's what I'm assuming. That's, these are seasonal.
Right, so, so.
We should at least double it.
I would, yeah, I mean, otherwise, are you saying otherwise? Cause you said something about double cost for commercial?
Well, cause that's what Dave was saying, or I, I jumped on to, because Dave said, well, there's a commercial launch rate, but then I look at that and the commercial launch rate says launch or retrieve, so theoretically, a charter fisherman who's putting his boat in and out is, is, should be paying forty dollars to do that.
Each time, yeah.
Which is, you know, then obviously even if we set the, the seasonal pass at four hundred dollars, he's gonna want that seasonal pass. Cause it's way cheaper.
Right.
But I don't know if technically a, if, if maybe that's part of why we have this, this seasonal thing, cause it, a commercial launch as contemplated here is, I think, in my mind, putting a big boat in or putting a big boat out, not necessarily like a regular one, so I, I don't know if those are a little bit, you know, oranges and tangerines, not exactly apples and orange, but a little bit different.
Right.
Type of situation.
See, in the spring, when I dump my boat in, I pay twenty bucks and in the fall, when I pull it out, I pay twenty bucks. Cause mine's in for the whole season, cause I have a slip elsewhere.
You just pay the daily fee.
Yeah, yeah, cause I only put it in once in the spring and out in the fall. That's what I've always been charged. So, so it seems to me like we should, we should have a commercial launch and haul out for situations like mine where
Correct.
I'm, I'm just launching it once in the spring and out in the fall.
Premier, I, I don't know how much Dave did, I'm sure he did it a little bit, but I know Premier does a ton of it.
Right. But, but then we should probably still have some sort of fee, right, for those guys that are launching every day that are commercial? Cause otherwise, like you said, they fall under the, the seasonal. Like my brother-in-law has a sixteen-foot boat that he gets a seasonal pass for and he fishes out there all the time. So he's dumping it in and taking it out a couple of times a week. But, but that should be different than, than guys with big commercial boats that are making money, I think.
Done a charter.
Right. You, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So, so should we, should we go to three hundred for that?
I would think so.
That yearly?
For that charter fishing, and that's with a trailer.
Right.
That would be only with a trailer.
Sure. Yeah.
Can I?
Yeah.
I, I mean, an owned trailer, not a commercial trailer, but an owned trailer.
Right, somebody that's launching their own boat.
Double axle, single axle boat trailer.
Right.
Couldn't we do charter fishing vessel, the season pass of three hundred dollars and the commercial launch at three hundred dollars? Because if they're going in and out.
The, the problem with that, cause that's not a bad idea, it's like they were doing the same thing, but I think most of the commercial launch is actually commercial launching. I'm paying someone to put my boat in.
What I'm saying is have a, a seasonal pass for the commercial launchers, too.
Those guys are, they're, they'd be giving, they'd be giving them money to give them a season pass.
I do the billing, so I, I could go.
You don't think, no?
I could go get the bills and let you know what the average is, but.
You know, the interesting part about that is, and I know you do the billing, but you don't see all of the, the transient or the commercial launches that go on, because a lot of times it's done before and after.
Pete gives me the, the information.
It's done in the evening after Pete and everybody closes as well. And it, it's, it's one of those things, it's, I mean, I've seen it happen. I've done it. I've launched in here, there a lot. I just love it, it's too honest, it's paid for it.
Yeah.
But they, they launch a lot and.
Oh, I, I understand.
Like Kyle says, you, you, at that point, you're paying them to use that piece of property. Think of that piece of property as a commercial piece of property with you would pay for taxes just on a launch ramp.
Right.
On the bay.
Right.
And somebody's gotta pay for that.
Yep. Clearly, our consultant made it clear that this is where we're making the least amount of money on the most expensive part of our marina.
Exactly. Exactly.
So.
Most used part of our marina as well.
Yeah.
Maybe as a bigger issue, to, to Chris's point, we set a fairly high seasonal launch rate for the commercial droppers and say like, Premier, no, you gotta give us fifteen hundred bucks or go, go.
That would still be cheap.
Well, but if they're not, if they're never paying, if they're, they're coming in at night and not paying anyways.
But what happens is I paid more than fifteen hundred bucks when I was doing it over there.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm.
I only launched a percentage of my boats over at Elmore.
Right. So let's.
And that was years ago.
So let's do it this way. Let's kind of have a consensus on where we want to set them as we go down the list. And then if we can iron each one out as we go, then we can vote on the whole thing. Does that work for everybody? So, so a hundred and twenty-five for the seasonal?
Hundred and fifty.
Did we say a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
I had a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, we said a hundred and twenty-five.
I've got one fifty written down, but anyways.
Okay. What do we want to do? You want to do a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty?
I'd go a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty doubles it?
Yep.
Are we okay with that?
Sure.
All right. Let's go a hundred and fifty. And then three hundred for the charter fishing vessel, we decided on that? Is that what consensus? Okay. So then we would skip all the way down to daily ramp usage fee. Right now it's ten dollars. So there's a couple of ways for us to do this. We talked about doing it like single axle, double axle, triple axle, you know, it's ten for the single axle guys, fifteen for the double and twenty for the triple or fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, something like that. If we try to do it by the size of the boat, that's pretty tough. That, that'd be, you know, for them to stand out there and go.
Well, everybody's got a thirty-foot boat.
Yeah, yeah. Or we do one fee for everybody, but that doesn't seem fair to me when.
I think given the way, at least in my opinion, as he suggested and as we see, there are certain boaters who are taking up the, the, the volume of area that three sixteen-foot boats would take up. So I think we should in some way account for that.
You know, a, a simple way, Mackinac Bridge, you pay for one axle, two axle or three axles when you go over there. That might be a simple way to, to figure that. I, I mean, I suppose there are semis that bring in double axles, but usually it's the semi cab. Usually when they come in, they're hauling a triple axle boat. So, cause to your point, Kyle, I mean, they take up the most space, they do the most damage, they do the most wear and tear. So how do we want to skin this cat? I mean, do we?
I would say maybe we bump it up to fifteen for everybody, twenty-five for a double and thirty-five for a triple. Cause tri, the triples, I would still imagine are fairly rare. And if you've got a triple, I don't think you're batting an eye at spending thirty-five bucks at that point, cause your, your day on the bay is costing you like a lot.
There's a lot of triple axles now.
There is.
There is.
I would go, I personally would go twenty, thirty and forty.
What's everybody want to do on that? I, you know, I, I, two thousand and seventeen, we changed it from five to ten and it'd been five since I was a kid. So, so, but I also don't, you know, one of our, one of the things that we've taken pride on is allowing the average guy to be able to use the marina. And I know we can't afford to just do that, because it won't be here for them if we don't take care of it. But, but the smaller boats.
They can jump up into the, the seasonal. If they're, if they're small and they, they're gonna launch a fair amount, they can jump up and do the seasonal instead of doing the, the daily. So you'll maybe sell way more seasonal passes, but you're gonna then jump into the three axle and the four axles.
So you're thinking.
They're actually charging them what they should be paid for, because they're abusing the ramp more than the small boat.
So you're thinking twenty, thirty and forty?
Twenty, thirty and forty.
For, for that many axles? So.
Exactly.
Okay. What's everybody think on that? Is that something we want to do?
What did you say, twenty for a single axle?
Yeah.
Thirty for a double axle and forty for a triple axle?
Twenty would be for a, a single and a double. And then the three axle would be thirty and then forty for the bigger ones.
Forty for?
Some of those are, oh, that, no, you're right. You're right, Terry. You're right.
So twenty, thirty and forty for one, one, two and three axles?
Yes.
Okay.
Some of those will come in at four axles.
Yeah, anything three axles and above, I would say, if you got four axles.
But then again, I would hope.
That time component, each additional fifteen minutes, another ten bucks?
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I don't think that's ever getting enforced. I've never observed it.
I don't think we've ever enforced that.
I've, I've seen it enforced a couple of times where people were broke down in the ramp or if someone, a lot of times what will happen in spring and fall, people will pull up to the ramp to wait to either get hauled out or they'll get launched and they'll just sit there for an hour, two or sometimes three hours, because there's other ramps available. They'll just sit there and very seldom do they get charged, you're right. And, but they should be charged and have to move.
So we should keep it?
Just keep it doing this?
No, I would boost it up.
To twenty bucks?
I'd boost it up to twenty bucks.
Okay.
You, you, there's got to be an incentive for them to move, really.
Right. Whether we enforce it or not, at least we, that gives us the option. All right, so now we're down to commercial launch and retrieve.
I think twenty for a single is a little bit stiff.
For that, for just a regular guy parking, launching his boat?
Joe neighborhood guy, I, I, I wouldn't want to spend twenty bucks taking my boat down there in the water twice a year.
They get parking and everything else, too.
Yeah.
So are we, wait, are we on commercial or are we back?
No, we're, we're.
I think we should have a higher rate, though, like from the thirtieth of July, June to the fifteenth of July in the peak period, when it's really busy down there, when all the downstaters are up here, we should have a higher rate then. Joe Fisherman from neighborhood here isn't gonna be out there on those times fighting the crowds down there.
Maybe something that we can look at in the fall to.
Like a fifty percent surcharge on those, that three-week period or something like that in the peak period?
That's hard to do.
Yeah.
Not that hard to do, it's just posted from here to here.
I mean, it's hard to get the staff to do. Sometimes it's hard to get them to do what they're supposed to do now.
You know, we didn't talk about that with our consultant at all. We talked about doing that. Not with the launch, I don't think. Not with changing, did we? Not with the launch, I don't think, not with changing, did we, launch fees during the peak?
We we did, as a matter of fact, he was saying some of the places he's been at, they do change in hot, at peak.
The with slips, but I don't remember him saying that about the launch fee, huh?
I'm I'm pretty sure it was everything, I I understand.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
But we, this has gotta go forward so Pete can
Right, right.
get his uh information together. I really, I really don't think twenty bucks is too much since it's not been raised in, between the crooked seven years.
I was getting my hair cut a couple of months ago, I maybe a year ago. Barbara was complaining about the, when we raised it to ten bucks.
Oh, I know who you're talking about, he would.
Well, ma- maybe at the bottom end, but like with fifteen, thirty and forty, cause I I like I, I I agree with with Terry, like
I do too.
As as a guy who's got a sixteen-foot sailboat, he's gonna put in and out of there maybe once or twice. It's on a single axle, I I would pay it, Dave, to your point, and I know what you're gonna say, I I am gonna pay it. But I'm more interested in these these giant boats paying a little more of their share, and if we up at five bucks and and when we come back and lucky at it, maybe we up at another five. Cause we're 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 being far more aggressive at the bottom end than we have been in thirty years.
Yeah.
That would be in the last ten years that we've upped it twice.
Yeah.
You can't make a payment after you lose your house.
I understand. These are the people who are who are gonna care.
So maybe for right now, we could, this summer, we could bank it fifteen for the first one and
Fifteen, thirty, forty?
Forty.
Yeah, I would, I would feel good about that.
Anything that moves it up.
Yeah, I would feel good about that, cause you know, you have people that come down there with jet skis and they got a little tiny trailer and they dump them in and I it but I
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, let's move.
Okay, all right, so so we're down to commercial launch or retrieve, and that's at twenty. How is that different than commercial launching or haul out with crane, twenty?
That's picking them up with the, they actually pick up a bunch of the sailboats with Elmer's crane.
I know, but but the first part says commercial launching and this is commercial launch or retrieve.
It's in and out, it's in to twenty bucks, out twenty bucks.
That's exactly what it was supposed to be or is.
That's what it is.
That's what it is, but that is far, far, far
below.
Below, seriously far below market.
Make that a hundred bucks?
I I would say that.
Okay, so we're on commercial launch and retrieve under daily ramp fees.
So would, when we have like a Wellstrom Marine or the Sun Sport or Aussie Sports or something that has a family that's going to rent the boat and they launch it for a hundred bucks for them to have it for the day and then they're going to retrieve it for a hundred dollars, that's that's what that is for.
That, what we're talk, and she's right, she's talking about trailable launches
Yeah.
with a, like a pickup or something like that, not the big trucks and the big trailers.
So should we differentiate these two?
So that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So I'm confused, so if I take my boat down there and I'm gonna launch it in the spring, that falls under the
Commercial launch or haul out?
No, if you put your boat in, Jeff, you should technically, which I've never successfully done this. When you put, when you or I put our boat in and like, if let's say I put mine in and it it shows up on a mooring ball somewhere in the bay and I come back, I should be able to haul it back out for free, cause I paid my fifteen bucks as a, as a, as a common non-commercial person. I always end up paying another fifteen bucks usually, cause it's the end of the summer and I never keep track.
I do too.
But tha- that's not commercial, that's just us putting our boats in.
It's supposed to be for the same day.
Right, same day.
It's not a month's length.
Right, so, okay, so back to my question then, so.
A trail, a trailable launch, a trailable launch with a pickup, I say, would say it was forty dollars.
Okay.
And and I would say with a pickup, a trailable launch, that's commercial, it should be forty bucks.
Okay.
And um with a bigger, the bigger equipment, it should be a hundred bucks.
And that's the commercial launch and retrieve that you're talking about?
Yes, the commercial launch and tra- uh retrieve with a pickup on, with a boat that's on its own trailer.
Mm-hmm, would be forty bucks.
Own trailer would be forty dollars.
Okay.
A big commercial truck and trailer should be either seventy-five or a hundred bucks, and I would lean to the hundred bucks.
Okay.
And those are like the the boats that don't, yeah, they're they're using your grabber trailer, pick them up off wood blocks.
Exactly, exactly, and or slings or that kind of thing.
Okay, I wanna make sure that the staff down there is gonna understand this too. So.
It would be a trailable boat boat
Okay.
that is on its own trailer, so like when she was saying they'd come in and launch a pontoon boat commercially, Action Autosport.
Right.
That would be forty bucks.
Okay.
Now, with the big boats, the big trailers and the commercial trucks, then they would, that's gonna be a whole different.
So you're talking about the guys that get it, get a sailboat, put on their
No.
their big trailer and then they're backing it in and launching it?
Not for the forty bucks.
No, for the hundred, for the hundred, you're talking about Wellstrom hooking onto one of the boats down on their their storage facility?
Or one of the big boats that are in Elmore sitting there.
Right.
If they, some whoever went in there, lifted that boat and launched it, it'd be a hundred bucks.
I understand, and I think that's probably reasonable.
And that is reasonable, that's fair.
I mean, you guys good with that?
The pickup deal shouldn't be a hundred bucks.
Right.
So, no, they were saying forty for like a few.
Forty, cause it's a tri-axle, that's like with me.
Their family's gonna pay. A trailable boat, right, commercial trailable boat.
Right, like mine.
Yes.
Okay, I gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, overnight parking, um it's fifteen now, do we wanna go to twenty, do we wanna go to twenty-five, do we wanna go to thirty?
I guess when I thought about this, I then my question became again, what are we talking about? Is it someone leaving one, are we treating, leaving a car the same as leaving your giant triple axle trailer for three days? I I think that, to me, that matters, cause fifteen bucks is a lot to just leave a car, in my mind. But is it much to leave something that takes up seven parking spaces? No, it's nothing.
Way that reads, it says overnight parking fee, not including the ramp use, so that would be for your boat, if you wanted to leave your boat there overnight.
Yeah.
Or your v- boat end vehicle overnight, it would be only fifteen bucks. And that's extremely cheap to get.
Right. So what do we wanna go to on that?
I think that should go with a forty. And you're storing your boat and your car and everything else is a lot.
The trailer and the truck when they go to Mackinac Island.
I know from a user standpoint, it's a lot of money.
It's not the boat.
But it's not a lot of money when you're gonna balance it out all the way through the year for
Yeah, if they go to Charlevoix or.
That property only makes money six months.
So so there's, there's two different things that go on here, so uh when I had an issue with my boat a few years ago, I left it there for like three nights and I think I paid fifteen, I think it might have been ten a night back then.
Yeah.
But like Chris was just saying, there's people that launch their boat and go to Mackinac Island or Charlevoix for a couple of days
Yeah.
and come back and those vehicles are parked in the parking lot.
No, no, but that's a, that's a vehicle. If, well, the way this is worded, overnight parking fee, not including the ramp use.
Right, so if they launch on Friday and and they're a
And they're even a trailer.
And and they pay forty bucks to be there to launch their boat and park.
Maybe what we need to do is do a different rate for the back property over at Brewery Creek.
Right, going back to to that though, say, say you're launching this this tri-axle boat, you pay forty bucks to launch it and then you go out and park.
I think that should pay forty bucks a night, I mean, he's he's taking up the space.
I agree.
Now, maybe the, and maybe we just have it mirror the, your 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 ramp rate.
Yeah, so how do we say that?
If you're gonna leave it overnight, you gotta pay your ramp rate.
Yeah, it shouldn't be the same for every size trailer, boat or truck, I mean, if you're only using a quarter of a parking space versus
So if you're paying fifteen bucks when you launch it, you ought to be paying fifteen bucks a night, if you're paying thirty bucks, then you should be paying thirty bucks.
That that makes sense, yeah.
So how do we, how do we wanna word that? Equivalent nightly rate equivalent to launch fee?
Yeah, 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 or axle numbers or whatever, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna say equal to the launch fee.
Right.
Or equivalent to launch fees, that makes sense?
Yeah, it does, that's a good one.
Okay. Uh boat sewage pump out, I, do we get many of those, Chris?
Oh, yes.
A lot, okay, so it's currently ten, I think it's fifteen or twenty at Harbor West now.
I think it's closer to twenty at Harbor West in the city.
I think it's, I think, I think it's eighteen at Harbor West, now that you mention it.
So I would say at least fifteen, at least fifteen.
I'd say twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty for pump out, you guys good with that?
Yep, good.
Yeah.
Twenty sounds better.
Yeah.
Twenty's fine.
I got a ten-gallon holding tank.
Yeah.
I have one of these giant holding tanks, they do a lot of pumping out and tipping.
You can get a five-gallon tank, it's called a bucket.
You know, it is interesting that Kyle does say that, some of the holding tanks on the bigger power boats, they're like forty, fifty gallons.
Yeah.
So it is
Well, sometimes they wait to the end of the season.
Right.
No.
I suppose, if there was.
Well, right, most of the pumpouts is at the end of the season.
They wait to the end of the season to get a
Yes, cause they, you're correct, it's
A flush, a multi-flush.
You've definitely gotta do that before you put the boat away. And no, and some people don't really use theirs that much, but some people have more, but usually it's just, it's like a
Right.
Boat gets used for like a weekend, it's part of the weekend is, cause we have a very small tank.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, I do know there was a charter boat that was a really beat up, not a well-taken care of charter boat on East Bay that their head wasn't working, so they used a shop vac after.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, that's pretty gross. Commercial launching or haul out with the crane, okay. So so I'm trying to understand this, so we charge twenty bucks for what?
It is just to have the crane sit there on the wall and lift the boat up.
Per boat?
Per boat.
Okay, so so they charge, like, I am easy numbers, they got ten boats, Elmer says we'll do it for a thousand dollars, that's a hundred bucks a boat and then they pay us twenty for each boat. And and those numbers don't have any significance, I'm just using it for
I I think it was fifteen years ago, it was about a thousand bucks, I think, that they were paying for the crane, I don't know what it was.
So
Correct.
So we should raise that?
I would, I would, that should go at least fifty or more. And thirty for the mast or more.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so fifty per boat?
Fifty per boat.
And thirty per for mast?
Per mast.
Are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
That means pretty much every sailboat that's sitting in our storage, we're getting fifty more bucks out of.
Right, right.
And if a number in Russians yard, we're getting fifty more bucks out of.
Right, so speaking of that, um this fall, why don't we look at winter, I don't think we have to address winter storage rates right now, do we?
No. Look at winter storage rates.
Yeah, we should do that this fall and really do some research on them.
Ain't ain't a mast storage rates.
Yeah, but but we need to do some research on what they're, who's charging what for that.
Did you wanna go back to wall rates and transient daily mooring fee?
Yes.
We did, we kinda skipped that.
Well, the transient daily mooring fees, well, I don't, you would know, but I would say pretty much a myth, do we ever get any money on a transient mooring? I mean, not that we can't up it, but.
It's on the list, so I don't know how much we get of it, but.
So has, Pete hasn't posted any of either wall rates or the transient daily mooring fee?
I would have to run a report to see.
Cause if that's already been posted on the DNR on Camus, cause I don't know if that runs through Camus at all.
The only thing that's on the Camus is the transient slips.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I mean, if we wanted to up that, I wouldn't up it too much, cause we we can get a transient slip for forty bucks or maybe forty-eight. So and you're, you're on the the hook with no dock, so um and I and I really don't think it happens that much. Maybe twenty-five for, just to kinda the general trend of moving things up.
Twenty-five for the transient daily mooring fee?
Yeah. And and I don't really know that we've, I think we went back through the books, like almost none of those occur.
They occur, it's whether they get charged or not.
Oh, yeah.
Because I I know personally, I've put boats on moorings that are just gonna stand there and wait for someone to come and pick them up and whether they get charged or not, I have no clue.
Okay, so are we good with going to twenty-five for that?
Sure.
Okay, and then what about the wall rates?
Where?
Just above that?
Are we, first two hours, three, ten dollars an hour after that and then thirty dollars overnight, um.
So where, what are we talking about?
Tying up that wall to the north of the boat launch.
Between there and the
And center point, yeah, so.
And you, it's it's basically our shoppers dock, it's our
So people can come in and park there and run up and do whatever, whatever.
Which, I just got policy.
Exactly.
Two hours to breathe, but but to move it along.
They can't just hold there overnight also.
I know it.
And they they do that also within the, by the pump out area, all over the place.
Yep.
And and that's, that's another one, they don't get charged much and there's some big boats that tie up on that wall.
Yes, there are.
You know, that would be paying, you know, fifty, sixty bucks a night
Right.
if they were in a slip and they have all the amenities.
Well, why don't we just do that, are the overnight fee, it mirrors the the transient rates, you you're gonna pay.
Or the length of whichever one it is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so like if you got a fit forty-foot boat, you're paying sixty-four bucks to to be there.
Overnight.
Overnight. Cause it's really not, unlike the mooring ball, it's a little higher and a little tougher to get up, but it's really, you you're not without the amenities.
So so you're saying overnight rate would equal the transient slip rate for that size boat?
Yeah.
You guys good with that? Does that make sense? So essentially, I mean, they're getting, he said, but they don't have power or water like a transient slip, right?
No, I guess you're right, they don't.
Yeah, it seems a little high if they're not getting the same, right?
Right, so should we go from thirty to forty for that?
Sure.
Cause that would still be cheaper than their, than a transient slip for them, but they, and they wouldn't get the amenities.
The other thing is, is you you don't wanna promote that use.
No.
Yeah, no.
You don't wanna tie up the wall and people are gonna be going to the wall instead of going on a
Right.
transient slip, I mean, it's cheaper, it's just plain cheaper.
Right.
Well, but mostly people don't know about it.
Everybody knows about every, at least every, that's crazy, I mean, every space that's available, if you walked into that harbor right now or when it's busy and Pete has an open slip and you walk in or you have a wall space, the reason every space gets filled is because they will try to fill them, I mean, that's their job, that's why they're there. So if in fact anybody in the marina knows there's a space open, the wall's open, they're gonna put them there. And they should pay as pretty darn close to what the slip rate is in my estimation.
Well, forty's the cheapest slip rate.
Well, that's the cheapest slip rate, and that's what Jeff said, if you wanted to go by slip size compared to boat size. So if you had a a twenty-five-foot boat in the transient, it'd be forty bucks overnight, if you had a thirty-foot, it'd be forty-eight bucks. See, and then I agree with that, that makes sense. Cause you still have all of the amenities of the facility.
Right, and and I guess like you said, it's discouraging that use for that wall.
You want to discourage that use unless someone's really needs
Right.
If they need it, it's there and they're willing to to be there, I mean, that's the whole thing.
So what do you guys think on that? What do we wanna do? We we could make it equal to the nightly transient rate?
Transient slip rates, that's what I would do.
Or we could go cheaper since they, since they don't have amenities, I mean, what's everybody's, like you said, I mean, they do have the use of the marina.
But they do have the use to pull up to a slip, fill up a water and do it, all those kinds of things and the same things everybody else that has a slip other than power, and power's the only thing that's not there.
Right, so what do you think, you guys, you wanna go equal to to the, a transient rate for that same boat?
Yeah, I might as well.
Okay.
That discourages, that that means they have an option, they go to the other place.
Okay.
Use it as a first resort.
And then what about the ten dollars an hour after two hours?
I'd make that twenty.
Twenty? Okay, I think that's fair.
Twenty dollars per hour, or twenty dollars, yeah, twenty dollars per hour.
Yeah, so after two hours.
Free two hours.
Okay.
And, and that's what happens a lot on that wall, is all of the charter boats from every other marina pull into that wall, pick up people, and they pay nothing really to bump the wall. So they're picking up all of their, where do their people park?
If, well, I bought six hundred dollars worth of parking passes last year. I bought three books, because they were, you know, ten, ten bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll do that again this year. So, so they usually park right there. And what did we make in parking last year in the ring? Do you remember? So, so I mean, we made quite a few thousand dollars for parking that we never used to make because of that. So, it's great, and, and it doesn't matter to me if it's funded fifteen or twenty or whatever it is to park. I can add that to the cost of my charter.
And Jeff makes perfect sense. If, if a commercial bumper is going to come up to the dock, he's going to pick up six passengers, take them out chartering. That ten bucks or twenty bucks is really cheap compared to what, you know, otherwise he wouldn't be able to do it at all.
Yeah. I mean, they used to park over behind Brewery Creek and walk across, and, and we went through this when we, when we allowed it.
Road and all over the place.
Yeah, you know, they would walk through an empty marina and go, can I pay whatever to park here? And, and that's why we decided to start allowing them to park for a fee. So, um, yeah.
And that's just part of doing business, and you're smart to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I can add it to the cost of my charter, and they, they don't, nobody minds, so. So that's all of the non-slip related fees, I think.
Did you want to do a different price for the Brewery Creek parking lot versus the one in, inside?
Do we want to try to figure that out?
You know, I guess.
I, at this point, we're probably not going too much this summer because of the refab, but, uh, you know, I just look where it is right now and.
So basically, Kyle, they're paying the normal launch fee.
Mm-hmm.
And then parking across the street. So they're essentially paying for it with their launch fee.
I guess the only thing, and I'm sure that, that they're more reasonable is, you know, if, if I, if I've got to park over on Brewery Creek and I've only got fifteen minutes to come back and get my boat, how about twenty-five minutes?
Yeah, pretty good.
But, but I'm sure, I'm sure the guys are, and gals down there are being reasonable about that, right? That'd be the only real thing.
Might have to wait fifteen minutes.
Well, and typically, when you have a boat like that, you're not alone. I mean, I know sometimes they are, but usually you drop somebody off and then you go wander around wait for them to get back with the vehicle to launch, so.
And that's when the marina's generally only really busy.
Right, right, that's about six weekends a year that they'll have to be parking over there. So, I think we do need to look at that maybe this fall, Chris, and figure out exactly what we want to do for Brewery Creek. And the thing is, Pete and I have talked about this, I don't know how we're going to work this all out ultimately with Brewery Creek, because there's really nobody monitoring it over there, and it would be nice to have some system so that, that people because a lot of people that go across to the park, especially in the middle of summer, park over there.
Well, yeah, it's, it's overflow parking for the whole area.
And it's essentially free for those people, and it's costing us four hundred and fourteen, four hundred and forty-one thousand to redo that parking area.
But arguably, I mean, and we don't charge for parking yet at the Harbor Park, do we?
No.
I mean, it kind of, you're, you're walking across the road to go to the Harbor Park, or we're going to charge you to, to park in a worse spot?
No, I get it, I, I get it. But that's, that's something I think we all need to talk about and figure out, because.
I would think like for these overnight rates, maybe we look at a lower, if you park and leave yours in Brewery Creek, you save five bucks.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're long terming. Or something like that.
Should encourage, encourage the long termers to go over at Brewery Creek.
Yeah.
You're going to be there more than a day, more than twenty-four hours, or forty-eight hours or something.
Yeah.
No, I mean, they're just putting out, no.
Save you five bucks a day.
Probably not till fall.
So Brewery Creek's an issue.
Probably not till fall will it be done. So, just depends on when a contractor can get to it. All right, so, so let's just make sure we got all this straight real quick. So I'm just going to go through the numbers. So seasonal, we went to a hundred and fifty. We eliminated the after August fifteenth amount. Charter fishing vessels, we went to three hundred. Um, wall rates, we're doing twenty an hour after the first two hours, and then the overnight wa- rate will be equal to what the transient rate would be for that boat. And then, uh, transient mooring, daily mooring is twenty-five. And then daily ramp usage, fifteen for a single axle, thirty for a double, and forty for a triple. Non-commercial fifteen minute launch and retrieve, what did we do here? So each additional fifteen minutes.
Be the same, wouldn't it?
Oh, that's right. Okay, yep, thank you. And then twenty dollars an hour for each additional fifteen minutes, whether that gets enforced or not. Commercial launch and retrieve, a hundred dollars. Overnight parking nightly rate is equal to your launch fees. So if you're launching a, if you pay thirty to launch, you're paying thirty a night to park it. Boat sewage and pump out, uh, we went to twenty. Commercial launch, launching or haul out with crane, fifty. Uh, commercial mast up, thirty, and that's it, right?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, for now. Are you guys good with those numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So re, reread the, uh, commercial, the daily ramp usage fees, commercial.
The daily ramp, commercial launch and retrieve is a hundred.
I thought we had a, for a single axle.
That it was commercial launch and retrieve for, with a pickup.
Yeah, pickup.
Pontoon would be.
Forty.
Forty.
Pickup, pickup, pickup is forty.
Right, so, so that, is that, I mean, to some degree, that'll be a judgment call, I guess, on the staff. So if I pull in with my pickup hauling my triaxle boat, that should be forty.
No, you would pay the third axle rate.
Right, which is forty.
Which would be forty, yes.
Yeah. So, but if somebody comes in.
Well, if. Are you registering it as commercial, or are you registering it as, you're, because you're pulling it with a private vehicle.
Yeah.
You're, you're not out hired for hire.
Correct.
So it's not a commercial vehicle and a commercial launch at that point.
Right, right.
Just what I'm saying.
So should we say commercial vehicle launch and retrieve?
That's what it was, pretty much.
Because if we say commercial vehicle, that means it's somebody that that's what, you know what I mean?
They do, it's a business.
So it's a, it's a commercial vehicle that's hauling typically somebody else's boat.
Correct.
And that's what we're trying to delineate between the two, right?
Not necessarily. The people that lease boats, they, like, Sunset Motorsports, they have their own truck and they're launching their vehicle, their boats. So that's commercial.
Those are a lot of single axle, those are pontoon boats, little runabouts, maybe doubles.
Those are double axles.
So they're paying the thirty? I, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on.
I think we were saying the forty in and forty out for them.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yes, that would, that would be forty for those.
Okay, so where do we have that?
That would be the commercial launch and retrieve with the trailer, right here, John, with a rigor boat.
Okay, so where did, where, what was the hundred for?
The hundred is for the, when you're using, you've got the boats that don't even have their own trailers.
Okay, so what if it's kind of a big truck?
Well, you can have a big truck, but you're.
It's subjective at the point.
You're lifting it with your trailer.
We know what it is, but they can say, I don't think it's a big truck.
Right.
The big ones.
Right, I just.
You're lifting it with a non-owned boat owner.
When I, when I'm explaining this to Pete, I want to understand it, and I don't right now, so.
The ones Dave's talking about is the one, the ones that are on blocks, the boats that don't have their own trailers.
Right, I get that. Okay, so how do you want to describe those? So, because right now we've got one item, commercial launch and retrieve. And we're saying it's somewhere, it's going to be either forty or it's going to be a hundred. And I want to be able to understand it so that I can explain it. I don't want to just be able to say, well, you know, those big ones.
So, so basically, if, if the boat has a, a trailer that's the boat's trailer that it sits on, then that's, that's a forty dollar one.
Okay, so how do you want to delineate that? I mean, how, how do you want to explain that?
Consider that self-launching trailer, like, is a self-launching, you can back it in and the boat just rides off, whereas the ones on blocks need assistance?
Yeah.
Well, they just ride off to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just help me out here, I, I, because I want, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
How do we describe that to somebody who hasn't?
Describe it clearly enough that everybody understands it.
Pulled by bigger than a pickup, bigger than a, a three-quarter ton pickup. You have, pull it with a five fifty or a, you know, truck or a bigger.
Is there a name for those trailers, Dave?
I mean, they all have different names.
Broad generic name?
Okay, so let's, let's leave it at this. So, so if you're pulling it with your own vehicle and it's basically on your own. If you're pulling it with a pickup and you're dumping it and it's going to be forty bucks, if you're pulling it with something bigger than that, it's going to be a hundred. And, and I'll work out the details with Pete. Does that work?
You can tell, once you know what you're looking for.
Right.
That those trailers are.
Yeah, and I understand that, it's just how do you describe it so that they understand it? You remember, we got seventeen year old kids that are going to be working down there.
No, I, I have to make some flashcards and show some pictures of trailers.
You know what? Text it to them, Kyle. All right, so is that okay with you guys? I'll work out the details with Pete and maybe Dave, you can even help me with that. So, okay, so, so forty or a hundred, depending on what you're hauling it with. Um, and then we did the rest. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So everybody's got the numbers, so I guess all we would need, would be a motion to approve the changes to the marina schedule fees for twenty twenty-three?
I would make a motion to approve the changes to the, uh, marina, uh, would be unsure.
Non-slippery.
Non-slip.
Non-slip fees for twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. That makes sense.
Yep.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thanks, you guys. I know it's hard to do this stuff, but, man, we got to get it done. So, yep. And gee, board of review, poverty exemption policy. So, board of review, we have to, the board has to approve, this is the latest greatest, has to approve a new poverty exemption every year. Thanks you guys for coming. Uh, has to approve a new po- uh, poverty exemption policy yearly. And so we sent it to our attorney, and this is the latest thing. They actually dropped. So it used to be if you had fifteen thousand dollars or more worth of assets, you didn't qualify. Now, they dropped it to five thousand, but we can't consider vehicles, because they need vehicles to drive back and forth to work. Um, or their residence. So, so the actual amount dropped, but the rules changed. And so this was, Brian Graham wrote this, this is what it's supposed to be now, so.
So did anybody ever qualify when it was fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, we, we have about half dozen poverty exemptions. No, we couldn't include their houses.
Oh, okay.
But we did their vehicles.
Their vehicles and then.
Right.
Gotcha.
Right. So, and actually, there was a couple of them that didn't own their houses. They lived in, somebody else owned, and they qualified.
How does that work?
You know, I can't remember now exactly what that, what the deal was. I think I set it wrong.
Something like that?
Something, yeah. It's, it, you know what, I may have misspoke. So they lived in a house that, with their mom and I, you know, that, that kind of routine. So, I, I'm sorry, I don't exactly remember the details. But at any rate, this is the new, the newest greatest, so.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, poverty exemption, income guidelines and asset test policy. Presented to us by Brian Graham.
It's going to be resolution five of twenty-three.
Yep.
Resolution number five of two thousand twenty-three is, I don't know.
Has backside of the first page.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And Dave, you supported?
I did, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion about this? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris McCowsky?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Motion passes, thank you. Alrighty, payment of invoices, Dave.
Make a motion to pay the invoices in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Extended public comment. Looks like we chased him out of here. Alrighty, so it's, uh, seven forty-three, I opened public comment, seven forty-three, I closed public comment. And if there's nothing more for the further of the cause, this meeting is adjourned.